And if we stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand as a nation. For everybody. First item of business is to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Does anybody have any additions or questions about the agenda?
I move approval.
John, I made the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And I guess now is when I should be asking if anybody has any additions or corrections? Anybody have anything? Is there anybody who has a need to, if you had a chance to see the email that I sent regarding one of the personnel items, does anybody have a need for an executive session on that item? The random, or are we good to approve that without further discussion? We're good?
I'm good with it.
There being no comments or additions, all those in favor of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That carries unanimously. The first order is the approval of the board minutes, I have a motion for that, please.
Make the motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any corrections or additions to the board minutes of the meeting June 24th, June 30th, reorganization meeting July 1, and the special board meeting July 29? Okay, there being none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously, Dave, where are your reports?
Thank you. So just starting things off as always with the vision and mission, worked so hard on last year, throughout the year to define our work, partner, advocate, and leader, certainly has been guiding our work throughout the pandemic closing as we move towards the opening of schools. Want to start off just by commenting a bit on the work around the BOSEs reopening plan. We've had many, many people make very determined efforts under changing and sometimes difficult circumstances to produce a plan that continues to evolve, and some of those folks include Jay and Lori with the work that they've done in their respective program areas, but also our principals, administrative coordinators in our different programs, and some of the staff that we've invited in to participate in the meetings as we both met the requirements of the guidelines issued by the Department of Health and the State Education Department, and our internal partners really responded for us, as did some external partners. The Departments of Health in the region have been very responsive and open to working with us, and our medical director, Dr. Comer, has been just more than available and supportive and really committed in a very faithful way to ensuring that we open school in the strongest, safest, most productive way possible. We've made this plan very visible on our website, want to take you to it. Brings us to our website, and Gene, can you see, I'm just looking at you, can you see our website now, or no?
No, I can't.
All right, I'm gonna have to stop sharing, and I know my way around this well enough that I'm going to now reshare the internet. And I think now you probably can see it, right?
Yes, I can.
On our website, every page you go through at the top of the website is the link to the reopening plan, we're actually in that section here. And my compliments to Craig Clark in the Communication Service for both providing this template, which was made the process very manageable for us and user-friendly program, we worked with the same template, and then Craig was able to pull everything into one receptacle here. I'm not going to spend time going through the entire plan with you, but what you see here is if you have a question on any area and how we were handling it, it's just a simple click to try to understand what are the particulars for how we're handling things. For instance, if we were interested in infection control strategies, it's just a click and it takes you to that section of the plan. I mean, you can scroll up and down if you chose to, or you can just go back to the top of the plan, and it'll take you back out to the same spot, you could click on how are we handling social distancing and face coverings, and it takes you in the similar areas. So this was helpful as we discussed the plan with all of our stakeholder groups, our internal stakeholder groups, and the parent forums that we had as well. If you recall, the governor required that we conduct three forums for our stakeholders and the one for the faculty and staff. We far exceeded that, we divided the work by programs, so that each, for instance, CTE or Adarant Academy, they would have, they did their own three sessions, the forums, for their, both their staff and the parents of the children in their program, and anyone else who was interested. Then we also conducted two forums on Thursday and Friday of last week for all of our staff, where they could weigh in and see, we've actually created a pretty robust FAQ for our employees, it's in there in the employee section of our website, where we have chronicled and collected all of their questions through a Google form, and Craig has created a kind of a running document of frequently asked questions. And Craig also placed the faculty and staff forum that we conducted on Thursday, recording of that in that section. That's one of those things where I think it was a productive one, but if you've ever listened to your own voice for about 45 minutes, as I viewed it, I finally turned it off, I got tired of the haws and the ums again, but the information is there, and I think we've done a good job of ensuring that the information got out to our folks, and it's fostered some productive conversation. It's logical for our faculty and staff to have concerns about returning to our facilities and working. And the credit in the school-based programs really should go to Jay with how he's worked with faculty groups from each of the program areas and their union leadership to ensure that they feel heard, and not just feel heard, but that they really are heard, and we've made some adjustments to our plans based on some of the comments and feedback that we received from the leadership of the associations, and also just the roots on the ground, some real productive meetings with the nurses in particular. We have another meeting with all of our union leaders tomorrow, just to follow up with them again, ensure that we've answered the questions that they've had, and also give them an opportunity to ask some more, because we are, you know, we talk about partners for our organization, we often focus on those external partners, but we need to make sure we're focused on the internal ones as well. So that's where we are housing the plan itself, it's pretty easy to find on the website. Go back to my slide. Did I share it the wrong way? There we go. Focusing on partnership advocacy and leadership, wanted to talk a bit, I alluded to the work we've done with our Departments of Health in the three counties with the three public health directors, Montgomery County Sarah Borenko, Oak County Laurel Hedwell, and Hamilton County Erica Mahoney. They've just been very open to taking our phone calls, coming to our meetings, and working with us to develop protocols that are in line with the state and the CDC guidelines, and we need to take that and move it beyond our organization as well. And one of the things that I did this week was, or last week, was I requested from those three health directors from the counties that they establish regular communication with the COVID coordinators in each school district. We have one here as well, required in the plan, you have to identify a COVID-19 coordinator, and then within your entity you also have what are referred to as resource persons. Well Lori is our COVID coordinator here, but Sarah and Laurel and Erica have set up regular meetings with the COVID coordinators, they also just continue to meet with all the school nurses in the area, and have been very receptive to helping us, and I think it's a partnership that I think will last beyond even COVID. As we move through this, we've just established such a strong rapport with all three health departments, that, you know, I'm grateful to them, grateful to Dr. Comer as well, and I think there'll be an ongoing dialogue that helps us, if and frankly when we do have to deal with COVID-related tracing or some other matter. Our first call is the Departments of Health, because we do not test here, we work with the Department of Health, talk about what our protocol should be, but any testing will occur through local health providers in our leadership. Some of the things that we continue to do is we've, if you recall, when the pandemic first struck, we changed from monthly chief school officer meetings, superintendent meetings, to daily meetings with them via webex. That went on for a couple of months, and then things quieted down as we hit the end of June and into July, as we were maybe meeting every other week or so. What has come to bear now is we're back to weekly meetings with the chiefs, every Wednesday we'll be with the chiefs, and we were bringing in outside folks that can provide relevant information to our group. We've talked with, we've looked at a platform to offer. We've looked at a platform to offer remote instruction, at least at K-8 for the region, and really take root with the chiefs. We certainly work with the medical resources, our school attorney has supported us throughout that, and today we actually invited in the Section Two Athletic Council's Executive Director, because you may have caught earlier in the week that the governor gave some sort of approval, permission to schools to offer sports, starting on September 21st, but there wasn't much detail, and it's caused a lot of angst, schools throughout the state, there at least one section in the state that has said we are not interested and will not be offering sports in the fall. So Ed Dot, the Executive Director of Section Two, joined us today to give us an update and also answer many, many questions about what this will look like and when more specific detail may come from the Departments of Health, because frankly, that's where most of the information is going to have to come from. Kind of mixed amongst our chiefs, what their feelings are, they understand how important sports are to our kids, and would like to see them have an opportunity to do that, but there are many inconsistencies that all agree have to be addressed. First and foremost would be, how are the expectations different for athletics from physical education and education and music, or some of the restrictions that are in place? So they had many questions, and what we are going to be doing as a group is answering actually eight questions that Mr. left with us as a region that he can take, because remember, his Section Two encompasses four different BOSEs. So he's going to have, we were the first group to have, he's going to have subsequent conversations with CAP Region, Questar, and WishWe. So, you know, it's a way for us to work through some of the problems, collective problems that we have in the region. So that's the chiefs meetings we've been conducting, implemented, kind of amped up our superintendent mentoring program in the region this year. Recall, last year we had three new chiefs, this year we have three more new chiefs. We are working with the first and second year superintendents, both pairing them with a mentor superintendent, but also holding monthly sessions that include the three mentor superintendents that we've identified, but we are also inviting in other superintendents periodically, and we'll also be working on the relationship, the important relationship between the board officers and the superintendent, and we will be supporting that on a monthly basis. So a little different from what we did last year, last year we simply just paired each new superintendent with a veteran superintendent, thought we could do a little better by coming together collectively every month with a larger group, and maybe a more robust conversation and establish some deeper connections. All three superintendents who joined us last year expressed a desire to continue with the mentoring discussions this year, so we invited all of them, and so we've got six superintendents participating in that program. And I think I gave you an overview of the retreat that I conducted with the OAS Board in July, I would have worked with them on setting the governance relationship between the superintendent and the board, and setting operating norms, and we'll be returning there to facilitate some goal setting, and also was invited to attend another retreat of the local board, not to conduct the retreat, but was invited to come and speak with the Brown Alvin Board of Education later this week. So, you know, we're there, I put myself out in the superintendent's, and I'm happy to keep those lines of communications hopefully flowing in a productive way. And then advocacy, I wrote to you in a Friday report that BOSEs of New York had adopted a diversity, equity, inclusion statement. I think we all understand, there are 37 BOSEs in New York State, and the bullet I have under there kind of how I deconstructed the statement, you know, identify and eliminate actions and policies to promote biases and exclusion, embrace individuals for who they are, ensure equitable access to programs and services, and address systemic racism and bias when we see it. And I wanted to share with you, it's a two paragraph statement, broke it down with an animation into the first paragraph and the second paragraph, I sent it to you in an email, but thought it may be good to take a look at it. And I'll just move up a little bit. So I also shared this statement with our chiefs, and we'll be working with it throughout our organization. And I had one request from one of the component schools already to partner on some work around the statement regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion. There, one more time, just a little larger what it was, those bullets that I had alluded to, you know, eliminate, identifying and eliminate actions that promote biases, exclusion of groups and poor classes, embrace individuals for who they are, equitable access to programs and services, address systemic racism and bias. Very consistent with the last week when we identified our core beliefs in the region, I think that there's consistency there, but we wanted to have a discussion and put this out in front of the board, and, you know, there are BOSEs around the state, well, BOSEs of New York, this is on their website, they've adopted it, there have been a number of BOSEs around the state that have endorsed the statement, and that may be a conversation to add for the September meeting. Put that out there to the board, I don't know if there's anyone wants to comment or has any discussion about this.
I think part of our role is to kind of serve as a leader in the area, and I know in my home district, just by following the Gazette, the press reports, there are students who at least perceive some inequities, and I know that that district is working to, you know, meet with the students, try to understand what, you know, I'm certain was never intended and what maybe adults didn't even recognize, but that students may be built. So I think that, you know, our action in putting this before our board and taking whatever action that we take to adopt or endorse or whatever, or whatever day, you know, that process would be, is a message to the other districts, to the districts we serve, and, you know, maybe part of the solution that I know at least, you know, that family district is searching for now, because, you know, certainly their belief was that they were inclusive, they, you know, they didn't really perceive the setting, I'm sure, the way some of their students perceive, I confuse them like recent graduates. So I think it is good for us as an agency to describe what we stand for, and it's a good model for districts, you know, who also should be having those discussions. So I hope that in the September meeting, we do bring it back, and we maybe by then decide what would be the appropriate action that we would take.
No further discussion. And I will go back. Slide. And move on to an update of the goal development. Been working with Jay and Lori, we've kind of carved out some regular time on Monday mornings, good time to get you when you're fresh to talk about the goal development. So taking what we discussed at the last board meeting, this is a process that will continue throughout the school year. We will identify organizational goals, and then the subset of goals at the program level. But the first organizational goal that we settled on was this refine the relationships with the Departments of Health, this guide to health and safety, to support our school communities and ensure safe learning environments. And if I can, I want to project that SMART goal template that we've been filling in, and I won't go through, we've completed three goals, I won't go through all three right now, but I will send them to you in an update so you can refer to them. But the way we'll operate, and I think we started down this path last year, and unfortunately just got somewhat derailed. So our first organizational goal, the overarching goal is to improve and enhance regional partnerships within HFM BOSEs in our component districts and communities. So our area of focus here is building partnerships, this particular goal with a focus on health and safety, and we said our first organizational goal, or SMART goal, was to refine relationships with the Departments of Health, as I've been talking about. A little small here, it says what actions will take place in order to achieve SMART goal, who will participate and be responsible, what is a realistic timeframe, how will we measure or assess its impact, or, you know, have evidence of completion at least. So the first thing we do is establish a schedule for conversations between the local departments and the designees from each component district, by designees there, very specifically, we're talking about the COVID coordinators required by the plans in each district. So Lori and I have taken that on, you can see the superintendent and deputy superintendent, getting that, feel like this is just about complete, just follow up and make sure the meetings get scheduled, and then, you know, we'll have the detailed schedule of meetings. Hopefully the impact can be measured in a very, you know, some artifacts such as a flow chart, or something along those lines of how we'll operate when we do begin an investigation of a COVID case. Coordinate the COVID-19 related trainings, both internally and throughout the region, is again Lori as our coordinator, and the way we will ensure completion is that we have consistent protocols among our schools in each county. Would be nice to do it throughout the region, however, the way things are operating, there are subtle differences between each county, it's been a challenge, it's been discussed at the district superintendent level, and it's one of those things that is what it is, and so we'll do the best we can. Focus, there's some concern about N95 mask bits, or particularly in our organization in some of the special education settings that we serve, that build BOSEs and component officials' capacity to connect families, lack health insurance with appropriate avenues to secure health insurance, because when they go for a test, you know, the idea that they may or may not be able to get the test based on if they have health insurance has been identified as an issue. So in each district, we're going to have someone who participates, probably will be that COVID coordinator with the Department of Health, so that we can serve as a resource to connect people to health insurance resources. There's something very similar around that diversity, equity, and inclusion statement that we've already begun work on, and instead of that, and that goal probably instead of seeing deputy superintendent over and over, you would see assistant superintendent over and over, because that more follows at the school level. So that's how we'll operate, and I think you can see there are probably some things that would lend themselves to particular SMART goals at the program level. I can see Lori working with John Willoughby, or with the Transportation Department on some health-related things that get down into the more granular details of the work that we do. So that's how we will have multiple templates like this that we'll be working on, be able to update the board throughout the year. Our organizational goal two, we have been throughout the region engaged in virtually every school district and here at HFM BOSEs with law enforcement around school safety initiatives, and, you know, to call COVID-19 a distraction would be an understatement, but we shouldn't lose sight of the work that has been ongoing. As we think about health and safety, we should continue to, and it says refine. As we think about health and safety, we should continue to, and it says refine, just I, I think it's, it's just continue to attend to those very strong relationships we have with the, with the sheriffs, particularly in Fulton, Montgomery counties. And then the, the local chiefs of police and their organizations are numerous schools working with local law enforcement agencies to ensure that, that not just have, having a police presence in schools. What, what happened over the last couple of years since the horrible incident at Marjory Stonem in Florida was using and leaning on, on the law enforcement in the region for their expertise to help us reflect on our, our physical plants and our operating procedures. Almost more so than a police presence, having that police in, input into just how secure your, your schools are. So they've been, been great eyes and ears for us. In addition to responding when we need them in an emergency, but we also lean on them for their expertise as we plan for safety. So we hope to not lose sight of those, those relationships that were, were really burgeoning prior to COVID. Flourishing in some cases. And now, you know, we don't want to lose, lose, uh, lose sight of those. Advocacy, we, we will be building a goal around diversity, equity and inclusion. And then building regional leadership capacity. You saw some of the work that we've started already. We're building a capacity of new superintendents. I, I think that there is also a companion to that as we work with both the, the superintendents, new superintendents in the region, but even all superintendents in the region and their school board leadership teams to build, build the capacity for effective governance in, in all of our schools. So we have started building a goal around leadership there. And there will be others that will break to you, but we've spent hours talking about the, the goals you've set us in the direction, that these are the areas that you'd like to see improvement. And I think we can, we can deliver some, some quantitative and qualitative improvements for you. So before I turn it over to Lori, are there any questions about the goal development activities we're engaged in? So we've got two more reports. We'll turn it over to Dr. Homeforce, Deputy Superintendent for BOC Services and Operations. All yours, Lori.
Thanks, Dr. Ziskin. So tonight I wanted to talk to you about many technology projects that have been in place mostly over the summer. So very, very busy. Dave, are you fooling around with me there?
I don't know what I did, Lori. Hang on.
You're trying to, trying to throw me off my game.
I don't know why the PowerPoint screen's blank.
Well, I know what I want to talk about. In any, in any event, I'll let you see if you pull up the screen and I'll, I'll just keep talking. So on August tenth, one of our first technology projects that we really needed here at the main campus was a network upgrade. So the greatest benefit that we have from that network upgrade that occurred earlier this month is a greater, our servers, our servers are able to connect and transfer data at a higher rate of speed. And our old network was at its end of life. And there were our companies who would be providing support for those pieces of equipment. Were no longer going to be able to do that. So we wouldn't have been able to receive her support. That transition was pretty seamless. It was on a Friday afternoon. We closed down the campus about two o'clock. We were able to upgrade everything and we were set to go by, they said seven at night. But I know it was earlier than that because I started receiving emails earlier than seven. So we were very happy we were able to do that this summer. The second upgrade that we had over the summer was the transition to Microsoft three sixty-five. And that happened on August twelfth. So this provided us with a new, an email interface, which is called Outlook Exchange Online. And we had a couple of really great benefits from this transition. We were actually able to reduce the cost to the BOCs for our licensing from what we paid for our old system. So we saw some financial gain. And our old email system would have been decommissioned within the next year in any event. So we wanted to get out in front of that. While our technicians have been working so hard on all of this, the email transition wasn't quite as seamless. And we're still getting some of our folks online, but we're just about set. And the new system, people who are using it, for the most part, are becoming very accustomed to it. And we have all of our old emails available to us as well as everything new that's going out. On August twentieth, which was just Monday, we had the cutover for our new phone system, our new PA system and our new lockdown system. Our phone system has not, our old phone system has not been excellent, let me say. It hasn't been an excellent system for us. And it had reached its end of life, one might say, a little while ago. So we were thrilled to be able to put out a bid for this project. And I have to give Kathy and her office that bid process. And then we were meeting with vendors and having presentations. It was very time consuming. But we were able to select one of those, which was approved by the board. The new system is providing us many more options with our phone system. For years with our old system, if I needed to make an announcement to the entire building, I used to have to run down to the district superintendent's office because there are only a handful of phones in the, and the whole building to a PA announcement out to the entire staff. So now we have greater capacity to do that more easily when we need to make those announcements. And it also is a better interface for our technicians who will be able to troubleshoot for us much more easily than they could with the old system. So we're excited that we have this in place. We are still fine tuning. I think of it, when you build a house or you build a building, you have that last list of things that need to just be tweaked just a little tiny bit. But we are very, very close to achieving all of that. We have our new phones on our desks. Mine's been ringing multiple times today. It's working very well. And I think everybody's getting used to the new, it looks almost the same. It's, it's a, it's a good system and we're liking it. The fourth upgrade this year was bandwidth for this building. We have increased our bandwidth for a couple of reasons. One, to ensure that our classes here on campus would be able to live stream lessons for students who are in a virtual location. And I also learned during this process that all of last year, the bandwidth that we had currently contracted for, we were often requiring much more than that. But we have so many students and staff in this building that require network connectivity that the bandwidth is going to help so much in terms of not having those sporadic interrupted moments of service when a kid raises his hand and says, I don't know, I just lost my connection. So we are keeping an eye on that and we will make sure that during key periods of time, we bumped it up to two hundred, which may or may not mean anything to anybody here, but that's okay. It's more than what we had. And we're just keeping an eye on it to find the perfect number for us in terms of bandwidth over the course of this school year. The last item on the technology upgrades I wanted to talk to you about was Glebe Street. So as you know, big push this year, our P techs are all co-located at the Glebe Street Elementary School building. And we have three, three upgrades that are happening right now and have been in the process this summer. We needed to upgrade the electrical system to ensure that all the equipment would work over at Glebe Street. We have a lot of unique equipment that's part of our P tech programs that requires a lot of electrical power. And we needed to upgrade that system. We are also adding network drops to fifteen classrooms. As you know, you've been in those programs before. All of our students are online. They're using the computers all day, every day. The teachers are using their equipment, their computer systems all day, every day. And that will help make sure that everyone has sufficient access to the network. And then we're also adding forward network switches, which is, which helps those connections to the network function more efficiently. So there has been a lot going on. I, I do want to take a public service announcement and thank again, Kathy has been so helpful through this whole process. Our administrators have been supportive and helped with so many of these projects. Our new facilities director, John Willoughby, has been helping. Gabe Surtwell and our entire narrative technician team, they have been so good to work with, helpful. They're there when we need them. They are making sure that everything is being completed in as timely a way as possible. Our own O and M folks are being so helpful. So many interconnections when we look at these upgrades. It touches so many different places. Everybody who has been involved with it has just been extraordinary. So I want to take one moment to just say how much I appreciate all of those people who have, have helped make this happen. It's been a very, I'm, one might argue, a little stressful August for everybody. But everybody's been keeping their most positive attitudes and it's so much appreciated. The last thing for me tonight is yesterday, we did new staff orientation. It's the first time, and I noticed on the agenda to staff yesterday, it said hopefully our last time. It was our first virtual staff orientation. We did not bring people into the building. We had thirty-seven new staff participate. Some, just so you're aware, are not necessarily new hires this year, but might have been hired over the course of last year and did not have an opportunity to participate in last year's orientation. So they're always invited and we expect them to come in the following school year. Tara came up with a very, I think, unique idea this summer. She asked different staff members, administrators, support staff to take and just do a really short video of themselves welcoming our new staff. So we had our administrators, some of them speaking virtually in a little video clip. We had Christine. Christine talked about health insurance, talked about who she was because so many people contacted Christine about so many things, especially health and dental insurance. So they can now put face with a name and that was really great. Our instructional coaches spoke, we, Aaron spoke, other people from HR spoke. Really short lesson minute, just introducing themselves. And that, I think, was a really useful and powerful way to introduce people. Aaron is on with us tonight and he spent some time talking about with our new staff, social media and confidentiality. We have a lot of new staff who spend perhaps some time on social media. And Aaron, I know cautions them about what they say. And post is a reflection on them as well as on us. So he, he cautions them in, in a very nice way, but brings it to the forefront. That's a, that is a critical issue. And then Aaron goes through a, a series of links on our website where our new staff, all of our staff need to know where to find certain things for. He talks about snow days. He talks about how they're notified in different events that occur. So Aaron spent quite a bit of time, I think, with our new staff on those items. After that, Tara had all the participants watch a video. It's the fish video. I don't know if you're familiar with it. It's about the fish market that's been out in, somebody help me, Oregon. Yes, Aaron, is that where? Seattle.
Yeah.
Washington. Yeah, it's in Seattle. And so they did, they watched that all virtually. And then we used Zoom yesterday and Zoom allows us to partner up teams of people so they can talk together. So they had some activities to do. And then finally, we wrapped up as we do every year with an opportunity for the union presidents to meet with their new staff and answer any questions that they might have. So thank you, Dr. Ziskin and Dr. Brooks. My report's completed for this month.
Thanks, Lori. And I just would thank the board also, if you recall, we asked for a special meeting at the end of June. And I think the, the fruits of that meeting are, are represented in that first, first section under all the, the phones and the Glebe Street work that's, that's come to fruition. So we'll be ready to start and hopefully we can. Next, we would have Assistant Superintendent for Student Programs, Jay DeTraglia's report.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. So Lori indicated it's been a stressful August. I have no idea if to refer to, just wanted to mention that. I'd also like to reiterate what Dave said about the work of our building principals and our coordinators. They've done really an amazing job. And when I refer to the administrative team, that's the new group, basically, that's from the four departments, ADK, CTE, P tech and special education. We have all of the administrators working together. So I said, that's, that's who I'm referencing. Before you on the screen, those are some, some important meetings that we've held in the past two weeks. The first one there, we have had student program administrative meetings with our larger group. Just to, the first one was August thirteenth, and for the parents and staff meetings that were required for August seventeenth. We, we helped each other to make sure we were sending content message. And then, of course, the individualization based on the program's needs. Each of our programs is, are, are very unique, of course. Then we had, as, as noted there, we had thirteen different parent meetings among our four programs with over two hundred and sixty-nine family members participating. So we had a good turnout, good response. And they also had question and answers for parents, families, that was available on our website for them to, and in some cases, those meetings were interactive as well. The nurses meeting, public health officials, that was on August seventeenth. That was very important since, as, as is often said, medical professionals are the frontline. And certainly in school, that's the case when we opened in September. So we, Sarah Berenko from County, Kim Frederick, Fulton County nurse, and our school physician, Dr. Coler, Jessica Kirby Barnes from Health Safety Management. And Aaron Flynn also participated in that meeting. We, a seven-page document was developed as a result of that with a lot of questions and, and answers. So we're going to get that group back together to, to just make sure we're all on the same page. So it was a good discussion and good clarification. And Dave mentioned this as well. We had a meeting with the presidents and vice presidents of our associations on August twenty-fourth. And we're also going to have one tomorrow to finalize any health and safety procedures and protocols, questions that they have. Jessica Kirby Barnes has, has initiated a few safety committee meetings that we've, we've had over the summer. And we just had one on August twenty-fifth, specifically focused on emergency drills, lockdown drills and the status of the P orders. And again, I want to thank Kathy, the business office, the amount of, of work that they've had to do to coordinate the ordering is, is, has been monumental. And likewise, the support, Jessica, Kirby Barnes and John Willoughby. So I just appreciate everybody's support and collaboration.
Thanks, Jay. I guess if I would just make one parting comment, I've, I've, I've commented to Jay and Lori and Kathy and Aaron and some of the other members of our, our administration and leadership here, that, that my goal is, is to really have a productive cohesive leadership in, in the organization. And I, I have to say that, that the, the last month has, has felt pretty good with, with, with reorganization. I feel like we're getting a lot done. I think it was the responsible thing to do. And I, I compliment them on their, their approach to the, to the work. This has been challenging and, and just uncommon ways. But we're, we're working to get there and we're not perfect, but, but. challenging in just uncommon ways, but we're working to get there, and we're not perfect, but when I say I want a cohesive team, these people are working together and they're working for the one direction to support the organization and our component partners.
It's our practice to approve personnel items as a consent agenda. The district superintendent has recommended that we act on items seven, A through I under personnel. May I have a motion to?
Make a motion.
Allen, second?
Second.
Jim? Does anyone have any questions about or comments about any of the items A through seven? Okay, all those in favor of approving the recommendation as submitted by our district superintendent, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any? Okay, those items unanimously. These are the business items. Typically, we're doing those as individual items. First item is the claims auditor report. May I have a motion to bring that to the floor?
So move.
John, second?
Second.
Gene? Does anyone have any questions about the claims auditor report that Kathy could address? Okay, all those in favor of, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. The next item is the treasurer's report. It's recommended that the board accept the treasurer's report for the period June one two thousand twenty through June thirty, two thousand twenty. Do we have a motion? Jim?
Second.
John, any questions for Kathy on the treasurer's report? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That carries unanimously. The extra class report, it's recommended that the board approve the extra class reports submitted for the month of June twenty twenty. May I have a motion, please?
Move.
John, second?
Move.
Any questions regarding the extra class report? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. The next item is an information item, and it shows the end of the year report for the extra class report. We've asked, I think, for this information in the past. Anyone have any questions for Kathy of anything on the extra class summary report? Okay, then we move. The next item is the United Concierge Medicine, and it's recommended that the board approve the district superintendent to execute the United Concierge Medicine Agreement to provide telemedicine services to employees effective July one, two thousand twenty through June thirty, two thousand twenty-one. May I have a motion for that, please?
Motion.
Allen, second? Gus? Anybody have any questions about that? We had talked about usage, did we?
On the executive part.
Oh, okay. It's down, it's down below that contract section. Okay, I didn't see that. Okay, great. So this, so Christine, from your view, we have now from your view, the BOCES has had a good response to this, right?
It's a huge response, yes.
And I think you said the cost is like four dollars a person, but you know what it costs for us, for Kathy?
I think the cost was, I think it was like four or five dollars.
Four, four fifty, four dollars and fifty cents.
Yep, so the total for each employee per year would be five fifty.
Anybody, anybody else have any comments or questions?
Just from, from my work on the insurance committee, this is a, this is a home run service that we provide. Our staff makes good use of this. And the savings that are afforded to us through our regular insurance plan because there's less usage of our regular insurance. People with a common cold are running to the doctor. They're calling this service and getting it taken care of. They just need a prescription for something, they can do it. It's a fantastic.
Yep, yep. And just to clarify, sorry, it's actually that's a per month cost. So it's five fifty per month per employee.
Great. Okay, anyone else have anything before we vote? All those in favor of approving the agreement with United Concierge Medicine, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries unanimously. The next item of business is a recommendation to that the board authorize the district superintendent to execute the contract for administration of career and technical education, business education partnership by and between HFM BOCES, the Fulton Montgomery Regional Chamber of Commerce effective September one, two thousand twenty through August thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
John, and second, Jim?
Second.
Any questions about this? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. The next item of business is the recommendation that the board authorize the district superintendent to execute the contract by and between HFM BOCES and the Southern Regional Education Board Schools That Work to implement Schools That Work School Improvement Design effective July one, two thousand twenty through June thirty, two thousand twenty-one. May I have a motion, please? Jim, and a second?
Second.
Allen? Any questions about this agreement? Okay, there being none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. Item H is the twenty twenty-one school lunch pricing. And it's recommended that the board establish the twenty twenty-one school breakfast and lunch prices as follows. Adult milk at seventy-five cents, adult breakfast at two dollars and seventy cents, adult lunch at four dollars and thirty-five cents, and student milk à la carte at fifty cents. HFM BOCES is participating in the community eligibility provision program, which allows us to the ability to feed all students for free. May I have a motion to approve that, please?
Don't move.
Second.
Carm, and then John? Anybody have any questions about the school lunch price recommendation? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. The next item is a recommendation that the board increase the substitute registered nurse rate to one hundred and twenty-five dollars per day effective August twenty-two, two thousand, or twenty twenty. A motion, please?
Motion.
I think I heard Gene at second? Carm, I think I heard you in there. Carm, do you want to second that one?
Second, yeah.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Dave, you want to give like, I know we talked about why we're doing it, it sort of comes sense, but maybe just throw that out.
And Jay, feel free to jump in as well. I mean, essentially, or Aaron actually is the one that brought it to our, to our attention. I think Aaron heard from a number of nurses that they just weren't going to come at that rate we were offering, and you know, with the current situation we're in, we just thought we have to do what we can to get nurses in. But Aaron, can you describe kind of the scenario? You would, you would, some, one of them, a discussion you had with a couple of nurses?
Yes, so we had several, we've had several nurses who worked for us who also worked for DM in the private sector and have said over the years, since, at least since I've been here, that they've, they try to encourage friends to apply because we often have substitute needs, and we occasionally have full-time needs, and based on what they make in the private sector, they weren't interested to come for the ninety-five dollars a day that we pay. Now, obviously, a school nurse position is much less, for the most part, much less intensive than, say, an ICU nurse or some of the private positions that are out there. But I reached out to other human resources administrators and managers within the state. We have a nice ASPH group of registered personnel administrators that we work with and communicate with and ask just for some updates. And we found that the average between sixteen different schools and districts that we received information from was about a hundred and thirty dollars a day. So we were well under at ninety-five, and keeping in mind that we don't want to completely outbid our component districts. We brought it up to one twenty-five, and we're hoping that's going to bring some more, some more substitute, more interest for us.
So, you know, we're not likely to have a nurse out every day, but if we did, the thirty-dollar difference that we're talking about is is a few thousand dollars to actually have a nurse in the building. I think it's worth it, particularly with the conditions that we're facing now. Keep up with the time. Aaron?
Yep, no problem.
Okay, anyone have anything to ask about this? Okay, then, all those in favor of approving the increase in the per DM school nurse rate, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? That motion carries unanimously. The next item of business would be any board member comments or reports? Do we have any board members who want to make any comments?
I've seen the report. I do have the concept. Listening to every, this is discussion today, I start to just like to look at the technology that's played and the ease in which we've been able to pan up from every aspect. You're talking about concierge, you're talking about nurses, you're talking about school rules and saving. All these things have been able to come into our plans through the technology that we I can't imagine any of you or any of you being able to accomplish what you've accomplished without that technology in place, working so well. And as Lori said, now it's even better than it was before. So I think that part at least is in good, we can only get to the end of the pandemic, it made me even happier. I was reflecting a little bit because even ten years ago, you couldn't have done this easily. Did you hear what I'm saying?
You know, Gene, we talked about, I talked about the effort of the team, but as I'm sitting here and looking at the screen, I don't mean to to make anyone blush, but the heavy lift that occurred with all these, really Kathy's team did a fantastic job, Kathy and her team. So I agree with you, and I give a business, the business officer a big pat on the back.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board on anything?
Just to comment on your recent Friday updates with your, with the your flowchart of the leadership team here and what you've been able to put together in the midst of a of a pandemic. Our organization has continued to move forward, and you put together a leadership team and administrative team is probably the strongest team that I've ever been associated with in all my years as a school board member. I just congratulate you and your team. We've got some, we've got some really good talent in this BOCES, and they're being utilized very well, I think. Congratulations.
Thank you, and thank you. You provided with some pretty good material. We just put them where they needed to be.
I really agree with Jim, and I'm reminded of the, there was an old saying that said, what do you do if you have an indispensable person in your business? The answer is you find them and fire them because you can't afford to have an indispensable person. And what Dave and his, his team has been able to do is really, you know, dispel that view that there's one person who has all of the answers, and really kind of creating the opportunity for leaders to emerge and to practice, I think, is a key, a key piece to us really moving forward. And I think what I'm seeing Dave do is do that with his leaders, and then as I listening, for example, to Jay, which is our newest position, his team, you know, really beginning that sense of how leadership is broadening, and we don't have that indispensable person. Where a lot of agencies, you know, have the person who's got all the answers, but here, I mean, ultimately, we're going to hold Dave accountable, right? But the way that he structured the team, his teams, and then they're structuring their teams, I think that really makes us a much stronger agency. Certainly, it's a step in the direction that we kind of had in mind when we were bringing Dave on, you know, in those interviews. So anyway, it comes at a I was, I was able to begin working on the results of the evaluation that we did. My best advice is never get the free version of anything because if you get Survey Monkey, you're probably better to pay for it. But I have the free version. But I do have things pretty much deciphered, and I'll email that out to the board this week. But basically, the general summary is that Dave scored at or above our expectations in all of the areas, even in light of the uniqueness of this opening year for him, and it certainly hasn't been difficult. And I, you know, for me, the, the comment that Jim made, that probably one of the biggest mistakes that he's had, and a good, a good omen for where we're going to be going in the future, particularly when things return to normal, as we know they will someday.
And I will tell you, as I sit in my regular meetings with Lori, Kathy, and Jay and others, but they're that core, you know, senior leadership team, there's great comfort to know that we're going to get done what we need to get done. Just, you know, example, I just go back to late June when we were worried that we weren't going to be able to pull things off at Gleve and the phone systems. And this, this group made it happen, and Lori walked in one day and I said, you have technology. And now she's she's making sure it gets, it gets done. So, and, and I'd be remiss also not to comment, if you remember a year ago, we were worried sick about the number of physicians that were vacant as we were opening the school year, and there's been great, great improvement there as well. So, nice job in HR as well.
Any other comments or announcements from the board? Okay, the next item has to do with the NISBL Annual Convention Registration, which is a virtual meeting this year. You have that?
I do have that. It's a virtual meeting. It's October twenty. What I wanted to do is just let me know, email me early, bird, and September thirteenth. If you could email me by like September ninth, if you're interested in it, we can sign you up for that. It's all online this year.
Okay. And would you send us a reminder?
I will of course send you.
I'm at the point where I will remember this until I get back to my car. So if you'll send an email reminder, that would be good. Okay, the next item, and if no one has anything else, is the announcement of our upcoming meeting, which is going to be our regular board meeting held on September thirty, two thousand, or twenty twenty. Any other meetings coming up? Okay, do we have a second? Jim?
Second.
All those in favor? All of the, all those in favor of a journey, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Everyone? Let's see also.
Hi, everybody. Good to see you. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Wash your hands.